You're you're almost very often above.
Oh, you don't read that.
Not that.
You just like this.
I was I was complimenting you.
You couldn't have been. I'm gonna call you Benelke.
The only one to read it.
I set up the tour and it's.
So we have the T's number.
Yeah, let me go back down.
Wednesday will be done. We did find a structural failure. It starts off, uh, I can say in the middle of the skin minimal. Obviously, trust me, this message is.
That is when you're really hustling.
Very good.
Actually, what are you doing?
So.
It takes a lot of time to get the problem.
So they.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, now. Good.
So bad.
That's all.
We could.
Probably.
Getting your smile.
I know. I figured. A lot of people forget to.
I don't.
Don't lose.
Long man.
Yeah, a lot of them forget to put the T number that we get it.
That's nice.
Even even very.
It's just like.
Evening and welcome to the Monday, June tenth meeting of the. Monthly meeting of the city of Shoreacre City Council. Ms. Goodman, you call the role, please.
Yes, sir. Mayor.
Present.
Proton Mayor McCollum.
Present.
Older woman, Brahmos, present. Older man, Griesen.
Present.
Older man, Hopkins.
President.
Not the male. Well.
Present.
Don't get a quote. Are you doing me in?
Really? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is Texas. A nation under God, individual, liberty and justice for all. And the Texas flag.
On on the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the unique Texas source, one state under God, one and indivisible.
All right. Thank you guys for coming out this evening. We are going to rearrange the. We're going to do the oath of office first and then we'll get to item three point one. So Ms. Goodman. Mr. Grease and Mr. Bill. We have to be sworn in, sir, or follow. You know. That's what you gotta say. Okay.
Right.
We're standing here.
But you got your back to her.
Yeah, I'm trying to stay out of the way here. Let me get over here about you.
Yes, yes, go on, Paul. That way you get a zigger. All right. Great.
Great.
In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas, I.
David Jennings, where's Bill? I solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of mayor. Office of.
Alderman.
Alderman. Um, city of Shoreacre, just the state of Texas. And will to the best of my ability, preserve, protect and defend the constitution and laws of the United States and of this state.
So. We are sworn in.
Okay, we can now continue.
People's talks. Thanks, guys. Good job. It's a swear. Congratulations.
Now, we'll go back to item three point one. Item three point O is special presentation. We did have a special presentation this evening. Item three point one is Ingenious Polymers regarding the possible purchase of something to do with land. And so, Mr. Harrison, would you introduce your guest, please?
Uh, yes, sir. So for several months, we've been talking. Uh, these gentlemen represent a company that we already do business with them in a way because we accept their sewer. They're our only commercial account in sewer. They've had that relationship for many years. They're located right across the railroad tracks here and you access them from a cave road. They have a cave road address. But they're wanting to look at some ideals to alleviate. Uh, train traffic over Chute Road and to have more storage for their own for their own rail cars. I don't know if it's gonna work or not, but I told them we'd get them before council and let them give you their plea. And um, and I'll see what you thought about it afterwards. So as John, I can't pronounce his last name. Not gonna try.
John resolve.
Come on up.
I'm the host and council. There is no business on the scheduled night, so no votes or anything like that. We're just listening and there may be something in the future.
Great. So Ingenious Polymers, I don't know if you've heard of us before.
No base or chemical?
I'm sorry?
No base or chemical?
That's it. It's the old base or can. So Ingenious Polymers, um, is a global company, privately owned. Anything that you use that's plastic polyolefins in North America is probably has some pixie dust from Ingenious Polymers in it. Plastic bags are durable, even car polymers, car plastics are possibly have something from us. Uh, we purchased Bayshore, um, in March of twenty twenty, just at the peak of activity for, uh, COVID. So we had nowhere to go but get better. Um, it's a family owned company. Uh, it's it was founded by a gentleman named John Lepus. They said mobile heritage. Uh, started it in the eighties in Canada and expanded all over the world. He's lived in Houston for a while. And his, uh, his son is now this the CEO of the company. He also lives in Houston. So even though it's a global company, Houston has been the, uh, the sort of the new, uh, center of excellence for Ingenia. We hope to to improve the plant from the heritage. Heritage. Bayshore. Hey Schulman. Whatever. And we want to do that with close cooperation with our neighbors, cities, La Porte. Shore Acres. And, uh, we we we're in a bind there, uh, kind of landlocked. Uh, we depend on UP to switch our yard. So we've come up with different ways to fix it up. Uh, if I may, I'll go up to the board so they can, uh, hold it. So, uh, our side is sewn inside the blue. Okay? And, uh, and we're trying to clean up the site, modernize it and get ready for for the next generation of plastics recycling and environmental protection. Uh, our yard, as you can see it here, is it has two, uh, turnouts. And all the cars are switched by, yeah, United Pacific. By UP. And they switch our cars daily every afternoon. That's the tradition from Bayshore. They go back onto the, what this is called the Seabrook Industrial, uh, line. They go out here and shoot cars back and forth. Um, so we are tied to relying on UP to switch us. And the 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 industrial line is blocked. Now up here, there's a huge yard, a rail logage yard, and they have an interest to help us switch it. Well. So, uh, one suggestion to allow to switch the cars off the main line and not block it is to actually have what is called a tail track. Over here. Now, this is your land. Um. And if if we if we go to the next slide. Please. Uh. We are designing different upgrades to the yard, uh, to railcar, to simplify our railcar switching and improve safety as well as ease traffic congestion. Uh, the improvement is to get a tail track in to allow us for in yard switching instead of the main line switching. And we're looking to for to see if we can get some land from you to use. Not necessarily to buy, but if that's an option that we're we're open to entertain any arrangements that we wish to have, uh, so that we can do that. Um. Next one has more detail. So, uh. So the green that you see here is the modifications that we can make to extend a short line. We're showing this line only within Shore Acres property. Uh, just north of north of the pumping station. Oh, sorry, west of the pumping station. Uh, and that will allow us to bring cars in, back them up here and then be able to switch them on any line that we want without going up. That's really the deal. It's it's very simple, but it has a tremendous impact on the operation of our yard and the impact that rail movements have on the traffic in the air.
So you're gonna have your own engine and be able to switch out the UP or UP is going to do it?
Good question. Uh, we have an option to to continue having UP. We have a good contact with UP and great relationships. In fact, we've discussed this with them and they're like, wow, this is this is what we've done. Um. But we also have the option to have, uh, rail logic from from the north here. Uh, have our cars delivered straight to them and only get them from there when we need them. And not take them out to the main to to the industrial line at all, bring them straight down here and switch them. And then take them back and UP can pick them up from there. That's what we have.
Allow you to avoid the main line.
Yes, sir.
And which in turn would open up Chute Road every once in a while.
Well, I I go I go I go across Chute Road when I go home.
Yeah.
And I normally leave late, so after after the rail movements are done.
Is you kind of just walking up that Chute Road with your your?
Not just us.
Not not just you, but.
Yeah.
How much would you estimate that that would cut, uh, getting Chute Road, um, continually open?
Certainly, our cars would disappear from that. Uh. And 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 I think that the overall operation with rail logics is really going to help. Something that remains is another turnout that is back here that goes to the west. And that's typically the one that gets in. So whatever they do, uh, we cut with them. Right? Something else that that you should know, I don't know if you know about the meeting that was a week ago today. Uh, at, uh, at La Porte, talk about truck traffic. And how that is going to, uh, work out with sixteen street congestion. Uh, and and the, uh, the new heater on on one forty six.
Right.
So we're we're looking actually to actually to help with that and try to get truck traffic. We we only have about fifteen trucks a day. Uh, but we're looking to cut that in half by having, uh, one way traffic for facility and get back out here without getting mixed up. Uh, that's that's a text dot, uh, idea that we're dealing with.
And now why to scrap a plan are you looking for?
So, uh, there is a standard, uh, with the allowance that we have on each side, but it's shown on the next drawing of the main. Which is over. This one, um, was the original suggestion that we got from our rail consultant. Uh, it goes beyond what we show on the previous drawing, goes into the text dot, uh. And and we don't know what's under here. What and what the structures, underground obstructions are and whatnot. And I think that your your sewer line, your your first main is 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 within that crosshatch. Uh, to to scale, uh, this is about thirty, twenty-five, thirty feet. Wide.
Yeah.
I think it's about twenty-five. Yeah, ten, ten feet each side. Yeah. And and.
Basically touches our egress to the plant, but doesn't. Doesn't.
This one, this one, this picture is is not feasible as far as we know right now until we get a survey and put the ground and talk to text dot. Maybe text dot doesn't want to do this. Uh, it would certainly, that would be the ultimate solution. Um. And you can see what what we'd like to hear from you today is, okay, it's not a bad idea. Why don't you go ahead and do the study and we'll work together to see what we're gonna accomplish. Um.
Well, we can't vote on anything or tell you anything like that, but I'll get with Mr. Harrison offline. We'll discuss that and.
Yeah.
We'll get a pretty good feeling for the the will of the council tonight.
The, uh, the road, access road now over to the lift station, so you would just move it, take it to the east.
That's their ultimate.
Yes, so the previous, the previous drawing, we are not going to get into the road at all. Will stop short of the road.
Okay, so that's that's the way you plan now.
This is the only, this is staying with a hundred percent within Shore Acres property. Our property limit is here. Okay? And we both share a neighbor here, which is text box. Um, so we're, all we can do tonight is talk about this part. And well, if 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 we decide to go forward with this suggestion and do the studies, we can talk to text dot and see what else can be done further down. That road, if if we go with the line going further down, would be relocated in parallel.
Right, so we have access back to the.
Absolutely, absolutely, sir. And and certainly, uh, in in the future, uh. You know, if you would like to, if we're, our road is very close to this. You can see we have a road here. That goes on this side of the, on the south side, on the, right, east side of the track. Uh, you know, we, if you would like to access the, uh, the property from there, because there's a train on the other side. There's no problem going through our property to access it by our arrangements. So our our intention is to open things up to closing.
Ms. Romans, you have anything?
How far off is it gonna be from our lift station? Cause I worry about the constant vibration of the rail cars. You know, when the the ground dries, everything shifts, so we may lose the connection to that lift station over time due to vibration.
That's a very good question. So the the fast trains that create vibration are on the red line. Okay? This line here is just pushing the cars along. It's a dead end. They're not gonna be crashing cars. They're going to be pushing them to the end and then picking them up and take the others. So, uh, but certainly our engineering study, I I've been talking to Mr. Harrison to see, he can get some drawings of where the, uh, and where the, uh, sewer lines are, so that we could consider the location and do the appropriate calculations and studies to address the issue that you brought up. So good comment.
Mr. McCow?
I got nothing.
Mr. Grease? Mr. Hoskins?
I'm good. I'm fine.
Mr. Bill?
Fine?
No, no question.
Wait.
Additional questions?
I have a question. Where's that lift station? I can point it on the map. It's right there.
Okay, do you have anything else to?
That's what I would like to do is thank you for 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 having us here tonight.
Oh, you're very welcome. Good to meet you.
And it's it's a good way to meet the neighbors.
Absolutely.
Uh, we appreciate Mr. Harrison's, uh, efforts to 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 see what we're doing. Uh, whatever happens with this is one thing, but we'll continue to be neighbors.
Good.
Please let us know if there's any objections to us continuing spending money on the, uh, use.
Oh, sure. But we we won't let you waste any money. We're we're not about that.
Okay.
No, we're. All right.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Moving on, item, uh, four point O, council reports and requests. An opportunity for council members to share community news. Mr. McCow?
Uh, the yacht club, if you haven't seen it lately, they've added probably sixty to seventy thousand dollars worth of new courts. They're gonna have the bocce ball and pickled pickle, whatever, pickled tennis or pickle. Hill pickle, I don't know, but they.
Pickle ball, man.
They're gonna have that. So they're in the process of finishing and it really looks nice.
Ms. Ronalds? Mr. Grease?
Uh, the only thing I have is, you know, that the Shoreacre circle down there. Again, you know, the tree that's, uh, really on the county property down there. It's about to fall down.
Oh, that'll be for Troy.
Troy, I just wonder if Troy's looked at, he's called out, called the the county, but they haven't really done anything. Uh, maybe we need a letter from the city saying this is a liability because it's hanging over the road.
Okay, we can talk about that when Troy gets gets us. Mr. Hoskins?
I have. I've got a question about the, uh, bench that was installed there by the pier in memory of Chuck Hayes.
Yes, sir.
That was probably about a month ago.
I I don't know Troy.
Oh, and.
You had Ray do it.
It's still wrapped in a blue tarp and it still has caution tape around it. And people are sitting there reading a book and have caution tape around them and.
We were trying to to time it with the weather. It was difficult, but, uh, we were trying to arrange it so Miss Hayes could be there at the time of the dedication and and not do it without her, obviously. And, uh, she wants to be there. I've talked to her two times and but I haven't been able to get a time that's good for her that we thought about doing it before a council meeting so we could go straight from there to here or or leave here and go there or something, but we're just trying to get it done with her there.
Gerani is helping with. Interfacing with.
Okay, well, I didn't I didn't know what the plans were at the time.
I didn't think it was. Yeah, I didn't think it was gonna draw on like this. I I was planning on having it up and maybe the next week doing something, but it just with weather and everything else has been.
If she has a time that's available, like after a certain hour, I'm sure we could all gather, you know, and it not be on a city council.
Yeah, I think we'll end up doing it on like a Saturday morning or something and just, uh, we'll have the the pier guys involved and and, you know, and that'll be real nice. Like I said, Mr. Gerani is helping, uh, he he knows her as well.
Okay.
All right, is that it, Wes?
That's it.
All right. All right, moving on. Item five point one. This is the opportunity for members of the public to address council. Time's limited, five minutes per speaker and comments are to be directed to city council on dialogue if it's not on the agenda. Uh, so we'll just start, uh, we'll start on the end. Anything?
I don't have anything.
Ms. Becker?
I don't have anything. Okay. Mr. Bella already addressed my question.
Oh, Ms. Mara?
Yes, I wanted to talk.
Up to the to the podium and tell us your your name.
Okay, I'm Mary Beth Mayer and I lived in Shore Acres about thirty years. I live in Seabrook, just just moved there.
Now, if y'all don't know Mary Beth, she's the one that we had the, uh, dedication for a year ago. She couldn't make it, but, uh, the certificate of appreciation brought up her work with Heron Park and and other things in the city.
And I thank you for letting Friends of Heron Park take care of, uh, the park. And last year we spent about twenty-three hundred dollars there. This year we've already spent twenty-nine hundred. We keep the trails up. We do all the trimming, all the adding of granite. This year the city council helped us with, uh, redoing the observation deck. They paid half of that. Uh, I just wanted to ask you, could we ever have a sign that's had an arrow pointing to, uh, Heron Park? Because Armin Bio and a lot of organizations around here prize that park. They come and have tours there and everything and wonder if that's ever possible. Are are you waiting for Friends of Heron Park to pay for a sign or what?
What type of sign are you looking for? Like on Shoreacre Boulevard pointing toward?
Uh-huh. No one even knows for, I mean, I don't even know if y'all have ever been there before.
I go there most every day.
So, uh, Nancy Edmonds and I started it in two thousand and two and, uh, she's moved to Seabrook and so uh, Mary Becker is on the board and David is one of our consultants and we try to keep it really nice. And so a sign would be great. And, um, let's see. I have this report and if y'all have any questions, you can call me or any suggestions.
Thank you so much and thank you for all you do.
Uh, are you just talking about one sign?
Well, yes, because.
One direction or two direction?
Any native, uh, plants, Armin Bio, everybody comes and they don't have a clue where to go. Yeah, so when you get off of uh, new one forty-six, it would be nice to have a sign going down by the bio pointing that way and, um.
See what that's doing.
Thank you.
Mr. Williams? Uh, Mr. Plant?
Want to give you guys an update on here?
All right.
All right. If these guys will give me a post, I'll buy your signs.
Wait, what what did they have to do?
They give me a place to put the signs. I'll buy your signs. I'll give them to you. Okay, so I thought I'd give you guys a. I'll give you guys a little update on the pier. So. I'm a great plant. I'm at thirty-five point two Miramore. So I was just like a spur of the moment, thought I'd give you guys an update. What's going on with the pier? Um, let me start my little clock here so that I can kind of manage my myself here. So we're nearing the end of our of our fiscal year for the pier with a positive balance. All the financials are in order and we did get the five oh one C seven. Everything is, uh, everything is good on that department. I do need a new treasurer who's moving up to Humble. So if you know anybody needs it, wants to do treasury for me, that would be awesome. So the pier is about ninety percent complete. You can walk all the way out to the end very safely, uh, including the Ts. The Ts should be done completely tomorrow, maybe Wednesday at the very latest. We put about fifteen thousand pounds of wood out there. Uh, actually, Sunday morning, we moved eight thousand pounds of wood.
That guy right there.
And, uh, he's an animal. Wes, thank you. Uh, it's a lot of work to move wood. I I tell you what, it's it's just a lot of work. We've got a lot of, we've got better access control. We put in a a barrier on the south side. We've been having uh, people who invite themselves to trespass. That was fixed, uh, yesterday. Uh, membership is as easy as a caveman. I tell you, you go up there, you just pop it with QR code. You can sign up. You can even make a donation on our website. It works very easy. We haven't had any issues with it. Um. We did allow this year under our bylaw updates about a year and a half ago when we had financial the concerns is that we, uh, for member, non-Soreakers members to be become a member, they have to pay two times the Shore Acres resident fee and they have to have a Shore Acres resident advocate. And I think we got four so far. So it throws another thousand dollars into the kitty for us to help maintain it. It's working out pretty good. The blue control system, I don't know if you've ever seen it, there's a little master lock touch touch pad. It's working perfectly. It works every time. We haven't had any failures of the lock. Um. So I can tell when people open the lock and when they close the lock. So sometimes I'll see a lock that's open. I'll go over there, I'll look at the history, find out who left it unlocked and I'll have a little conversation with them. And, uh, because that's part of the, you want to abide by the rules and you lock the lock the gate behind you. I had a couple ladies that happened to be in there and they got locked in because somebody didn't lock it and they didn't know how to get out and I had to unlock it for them. Um. I did give Troy access to the, to to both the boat ramp and the pier. This he's got a eight digit code, secret. He's not gonna give it to you guys. He's told me. Uh, we did give access to Galveston Bay, the water quality sampling bureau. They've been out there and they take samples there on them. We do, I did get Gary Manuel to agree to put up a Google camera on his domicile at the top corner. So I'm gonna livestream that. You guys are gonna have access to it. You can, I'm gonna pay for, uh, the ability to get video for ninety minutes every year. So that's something that you guys can get, but then I'll be able to find out of what what who's some of the problem people are. I'm a man of law, so we we gotta comply with laws around here. So we do, it's getting better every time. Um. Parking lot's next. We have a lot of erosion in the parking area, so I want to get that fixed somehow. I'm waiting for twenty-five thousand dollars from Bayport. I didn't get it last year. I applied for grants from Bayport, didn't get it. Hopefully I get something for them. If I don't, what's gonna do without them? We have to do diligence on running people, non non-members off the parking lot and it's just something that's just a daily issue, you know, uh, but we'll get there. Um. So membership's picking up pretty fast. We already had fifty people apply before the end of the fiscal year. It's 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 popping out there now. I don't know if y'all noticed. And, um, could use another garbage can out there. If you can get me one, but that's just a little, uh, that was four minutes, eighteen seconds. No, that's it. Just want to let you guys know what's going on. Everything's well. And, uh, by the end of the week, it'll all be done.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
For the update. Thank you for the work.
Are there any benches out there? Do you have any benches out there?
I'm actually having two of them built, new two new belt, two new benches. I'm actually having two of them built, new, two new belt, two new benches built out there with the wood that we had left over from the, from the pier. We had to put a lot of substructure work, but I'm having benches built. Yep. Those decide this morning. Matter of fact.
Mr. Shaw, anything?
I do have something. All right. My name is Jim Shul. I live at five nineteen Oakdale Street. And what I really want to do is just thank the city for their responsibility. We had a, an incident of pollution that came through and uh, and I reported it. And uh, Troy responded with the LaPorte emergency management people that came on and looked what it is. It's my entire pool, property, cars, everything was covered in a black oily substance. And what I did was I recovered that black oily substance from my pool and I had a very large bucket of black oil and uh, and then the um, Harris County uh, uh, pollution control came and um, took the bucket and I haven't heard a thing since. But I did get online to report the incident because they have an online site that you can get in and, and report pollution. Now, I can tell you that it covered a pretty wide range. I am sure the city was covered in it. And uh, and the police station and the cars and everything else because it was all over my vehicles. You know, my lawn and everything. It was just very evident in the um, in my pool. And it's, you know, it happens in this city. I believe if I had to guess, it probably came from a ship's exhaust. If you've ever seen the ships, all of a sudden will let go of a very heavy black substance coming out, probably diesel or whatever. And it must, and it was a very heavy, it would happen on a Sunday night's early Monday morning when it was very heavy out, the air was very heavy and the fog was out there. So hopefully I'll, I'll hear something from the city, but I, I heard from the, from the county, but uh, do want to thank Troy for his responsibility. So thank you.
All right. All right. Door, Nathan? Okay.
My name's Mary Becker. I live at two oh two Fairfields. And I just wanted to comment about the memorial bench to uh, for Chuck Hayes. I didn't, I wasn't even aware Chuck had passed away. I'm sure a lot of people, because there is no newspaper anymore to that you can get this information. And so I'm hoping that when you do have this memorial, that you'll put it on the billboard. But you'll put it on the sign out there to let people know because there are so many people that he knew, that he talked to every day. Um, he was a, a resident here for many, many, many years and was interactive with everyone. So I would really appreciate it if he would share it.
He's a great guy.
Okay.
No question. I'd like to address some very important as it relates to Chuck. I mentioned. Okay.
What?
Stand at the podium.
Oh, no, I was going to mention that um, aiming at after, after Chuck Hayes, I'm Barry, Barry Plant. Or Chris, well, um, Miramar. After Chuck passed, I, I put a posting on our, our uh, peer Facebook page. And I got a bunch of unbelievable responses from members of the community, tear jerking type of stuff. I've never shared him with his wife. But they're unbelievable. I'd like to figure out, print them out and give them to her, but I didn't want to do it immediately after his passing, but when I gave back to the community, I wrote about Chuck, I gathered much, the amount of outpouring was pretty impressive. Anyways, if, when you guys do that, I want to see if we can figure out how to deliver that to her. So I can share that. Whoever's in charge, I don't know who's in charge of this. But it's worth, it's worth uh, sharing those comments where they're, we can read them right off the page, but they're pretty amazing. You could actually go to the Shore Acres Pier webpage and look at what people wrote about Chuck. It's pretty cool.
We, we have. When I first came up with this idea, council was overwhelmingly in agreement. So, no question about it. All right. What do we have now? Moving on, item six point one, the city manager's report. Mr. Harrison?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I will read this month's, or actually last month's report for you. These numbers were the position we were in as of the last day of May twenty twenty-four. Uh, restricted debt, thirty-two thousand, four hundred sixty-one dollars, thirty-two cents. Utility deposit fund, ninety-four thousand, five hundred twenty-six dollars and ninety cents. Road repair taxes that's held at Texpool, seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred thirty dollars and forty-four cents. Represents a total of two hundred six thousand, seven hundred eighteen dollars and sixty-six cents. You'll remember we repaid Baywood, which took a big chunk of money out of our, out of our savings for Texpool there. Um, unencumbered funds, uh, general fund checking, hundred sixty-two thousand, seven hundred fifty-six dollars and thirty-five cents. Utility fund checking, seventy-one thousand, nine hundred sixty-two dollars and twelve cents. Unencumbered funds held at Texpool, which is our other savings, one million, twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred ninety-eight dollars and seven cents. For a total of one million, two hundred sixty-four thousand, seven hundred sixteen dollars and forty cents. But I have to tell you that since this report was ran, we have uh, transferred because we had to pay for the latest, not the latest, but the sewer repair before the latest. The latest one wasn't a, a great big deal. The one before that uh, council approved the transfer of funds, we've made that transfer now. So that number next month, you'll see fall a little bit.
Any questions on that part?
Or we're still this, Mary, you usually take the hit on this one because you're taking a personal interest in it.
It is my personal interest and we want to make sure we're not losing money on court. We want to break even. We don't want to make money. We don't want to lose money. So right now, um, if you already recall last month, we had a little bit more ahead. But I told you, it's going to shrink and even, you guys do not have to stay for this, by the way. It's, it's quite okay if you leave. We understand.
We, we appreciate the permission, but you know, uh, we're getting to know you.
Okay. And uh, and so we have uh, right now we're about thirty, thirty-five thousand to the positive and that's going to continue to shrink. But as long as we don't lose money on court, we're, we're, you know, that's our goal. And uh, so that's what's, we're still monitoring that every month. Oh, we don't write tickets for the city budget for the record. This is a very positive thing next.
This, this is, and I mentioned this to you several months ago, but I was hesitant uh, because it wasn't official, but now it's official. We have moved up um, in our standings to a class seven in the community rating system that represents a fifteen percent discount versus a ten percent discount uh, for the, um, for our uh, residents on their flood insurance. Uh, there's, there's really, I mean, this, this is just, this is just a savings for our residents, but I also have to mention that uh, the, the process, this is not a, this is not a short process. This process took a year almost to do. And one of the things that happens is they come in and they look at our ordinances and they look at our planning and zoning, I mean, not our planning and zoning, but our board of adjustments and things like that to see if we're giving variances for things that we're not supposed to allow. And they take a good, hard look to make sure that we're following all the rules that we set and that we agree. And by agree, it means you guys vote on it and make it an ordinance. So they're watching out for, for that. They'll drive through the neighborhood at night to see if there's any TVs on downstairs of some of these elevated houses to see if they've converted living space down, downstairs, which, which they're not supposed to. So it's, it's a work in progress. We work hard every five years to make sure that, that we're complying, the city's complying. Uh, we do have strict building codes. You guys know that. We, we adopted in, in December, I believe, or November uh, building codes that are uniform, that are uh, uniform throughout the city now. So this, this is a good thing for our residents though. It's a, it's something for them to be happy about.
Oh, it's a very positive thing and, and it was much more than a one-year process. You'll soon recall, when we first started, uh, almost six years ago now, we were in danger of losing our discount altogether. We were at five percent. We were in danger of losing it. We managed to move it up, correct that. We moved it up to ten. And now in the past, about eighteen months, it would have been able to move it up to a fifteen percent discount. And we uh, we hired the right consultants and Troy's done a lot of work and uh, the staff upstairs has, has, has helped and council has passed what needed to be passed. And so if you wonder why code enforcement sometimes is stricter than you want it to be, this is why. Uh, everybody would like to build a little shed in their backyard. But that's a danger to this if you do. So that is why we, we protect that so well.
And, and I need to give Latney props too, because he, he's a big part of this too. He, he, he's a stickler for building codes and
And Latney Lamb is our building inspector.
Yes, sir. And, and he, he worked with me through this. He met with these, with these folks a lot to try to explain to them why we did some of the things we did and uh, it, it was a very positive relationship that we built with all the national flood insurance folks.
Fifteen percent discount is helpful because our flood insurance is so uh,
Did I just make a quick comment?
Yes.
Just in the last few days, I've been doing, you know, spring cleaning. I sound like my uh, aunt, not my aunt, so I'm insurance builder from two thousand and fifteen. And it was about eighty thousand dollars less than what I have today. And today, when I, well, the last couple of weeks, I just paid my latest one and it's about two to three hundred dollars cheaper than what I paid in two thousand and fifteen. And we're now at twenty twenty-four. So this is really a big deal. I mean, I didn't even, I didn't think about it. I thought it's only like ten percent. So what? There's a lot in insurance. You know, if it was four thousand dollars, you're now paying what thirty-four fifty, something like that. It's, it's a big thing. I think we need to point out to the citizens or have some way of communicating this to them that um, it's a lot of stuff the city does and sometimes, yeah, we may have to raise property taxes every now and then, but this is the service you get for it. Is we'll reduce it here for you. And I think it's a big thing.
It definitely is.
Yeah.
Item six point two, the police report.
All right. You see the police report in front of you. Things stayed consistent throughout the summer for the most part. Uh, I think the citation difference was one citation. I think we wrote one less than May than we did in April, but everything else is about the same. You will see the house watches go up. Uh, that number a hundred and eight, what that represents is a number of times the officers actually drove through and looked at a house, threw the spotlight on it or got out and walked around or whatever they could do. So it's not a hundred and eight houses. It's not a, you know, a hundred percent of the city. It's, it represents the number of times they've driven around the same way with the college patrols uh, uh, and the yacht club patrols.
Any question on police report? Uh, it works, Mr. Harrison.
And this is, this is a new report. David Sutton was on vacation all last week, so um, I got this from his assistant and I didn't really go over it with anybody, but Bernie and Ms. Anderson and, and Mr. Sutton's people continue to work to try to uh, to make sure these numbers are accurate too. We know we're going to have some wasted water through leaks, through flushing, things like that. But we're trying to get those graphs closer together, represent, and we want to sell as much water as we can. Obviously, we don't want to run it in the ditches. But we do today, we flushed hydrants. I don't know how many gallons it is, but you know, it's, it, it's not substantial when you can look at how many we buy every month, but we know we have some water loss here and there. Gives you an idea about what they've done. We've um, had some work going on at the lift station. We, we, we have, after we had the work done on our sunrise, the emergency sewer repair, uh, for the next two weeks, we had constant problems at lift station three because of all the junk that during the construction got pushed into the lift station. So we, we, I had them. The, the bottom of that lift station cleaned out twice now. It's not real cheap, but it's cheaper than paying for pumps. So, you know, after we do work, that's normally what we have to do.
All right. Any questions? All right, moving on. Item seven point two, the amendments. Ms. Uh, do I have a motion to discuss?
I'll make the motion to approve.
I have a motion for Mr. Hoskins. Do I have a second? Second. Have a second. I assume you guys have had time to, to review the meeting. Any, any questions? All right. All those in favor of approving amendments as is? Say aye. And it passes unanimously. Moving on, item seven point three, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash six dash oh one, budget amendment on emergency sewer repair. Do I have a motion?
Please, sir.
Have a motion for Ms. Ramos to have a second? A second from Mr. Hoskins? Yep. All right. This is the uh, budget that you, we, we talked about it last week and you approved the spending and last month now, man, you approved the spending. This is the uh, the actual budget amendment that we need to do to keep in compliance. And so you'll see that uh, the additional spending approved was one hundred seventy-six, three, twelve, seventy-five. That's in addition to what we'd already approved. So you can see we've spent about a half million dollars this year. Separating apart from the, the, the bonds that we repaired. And so that's why Mr. Harrison said that our, our unencumbered is going to go down some. It's obviously not going to be emptied, but it will, will go down a couple hundred thousand dollars, but that's, that's what it's for. And these are uh, it was totally necessary, totally needed to be done. And got the uh, the best price we could and off we went. And as Mr. Harrison said, uh, if you remember at the May thirteenth meeting, the total was actually about two hundred and eight thousand dollars for the incident. But the, the difference is uh, rooted, it goes accounting wise, under maintenance because that was pumps to go around it. You recall, all that's temporary stuff we had to do. That's not part of the capital. This is just the capital. And, and so that if, if we need to add funds to the maintenance at some point, we will, but right now we don't. Mr. Hope, count anything?
Glad we got it fixed.
Ms. Ramos?
I'm back.
Mr. Reese?
No.
Mr. Oskins?
No, no question.
Mr. Bell? Okay. All those in favor of this budget amendment twenty twenty-four dash oh four? Say aye?
Aye.
And it passes unanimously. Moving on to item seven point four, resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh six dash oh one, appointments to planning and zoning commission. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Have a motion for Mr. McCallum to have a second?
I'll take it.
Have a second from Ms. Ramos. Okay. We need to do our yearly resolution to, uh, these guys are all currently on the uh, the committee. And as I, I hope you got my email. I sent it to everyone saying, if you had anyone else that you would prefer in their place, I didn't get any feedback, so I just nominated those again. So, but you can still, at, at this point, amend it to change it if you have someone in mind that you would prefer. So planning and zoning, we got Noel Almunoz. He's our newest member. Lives on uh, Seabrook. Tony Hill, of course, lives on North Country Club and Kendall lives on Seabrook. Uh, Leo lives on uh, Westview and Cody lives on Seabrook. What the, lots of Seabrook going on there.
Well, actually Noah lives on Westview.
Noah lives on Westview. Okay. At the end of Seabrook.
Well, yeah, close to the Seabrook there. And so is Leo. You're, you're about ten hours.
He's our friendly community plumber and uh, he does a lot of work. So, any questions? All those in favor as is? Say aye. And that passes unanimously. Moving on, do items seven point five, resolution twenty twenty-four dash one six dash oh two, appointments to the board of adjustments. Same thing. I emailed you guys asking if you wanted to change anything. I didn't receive anything, so I've nominated um, the current members of the board. Mr. Wells is Miramar. Mr. Goodman is uh, West Forest. Ms. Ellis is Baywood. Robert Robertson is East Bio and George is on Windleaf at the, the very end by the freeway. So that's a good spread around the city on, on, on that committee. And that's probably the most important committee we have because whatever they rule, you have no power over. Uh, whatever they rule is what they rule. And then if resident doesn't like what they rule, they have to go to district court and make, file a lawsuit. They can't come to council and ask you to. So that's a very important, that's why when, when I nominated these, these gentlemen in the beginning and, and lady, uh, they're all very sober, I should say, and, and they're thinking and uh, they, they don't always do what I would want them to do, but that's okay. And that's just the way it goes. So any questions or comments? Mr. Bell? Okay. You're in on, all those in favor say aye? And that is approved unanimously. Item seven point six, resolution forty-three four oh six oh three, appointing a municipal court judge and alternate. Be resolved by the city of Shore Acres. City council of the city of Shore Acres, that the city council hereby appoints Robert Richter, a citizen of the United States of this state, who is licensed to practice law in this state, to be the presiding judge of the municipal court of the city of Shore Acres. And that the city council hereby appoints Cherry Glover, citizen of the United States of this state, who is licensed to practice law in this state, to be the alternate judge of the municipal court of the city of Shore Acres. And that such appointment shall be for a term of two years ending with the term of the office of mayor. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Have a motion for Mr. Count. Do I have a second? Have a second for Mr. Hoskins. Again, every two years, uh, in the barrel of the elector, we have to appoint someone. Mr. Richter has been doing it now for three years, uh, since Judge Jay retired. And you have appointed him in the past, so you, you probably know him or at least have seen him. Um, I did not have an alternate to, to put his place. I know Troy likes working with him, so I didn't. Um, I did not have an alternate to, to put his place. I know Troy likes working with him, so I didn't bother with that. And then Sherry has been the associate for one term now and two years. And, uh, she lives on East Country Club. And so she's a resident of the city. So that helps a lot when Troy has something that he needs and, and Bob is, he lives on, in Westview, I think, or somewhere over there. Uh, so that's, uh, it's worked well. So I, uh, I nominated basically the status quo. Any questions? Mr. Bell? Mr. Hoskins? Mr. Grease? And, and it's Ramos?
No.
There's no count. All right. All those in favor say aye? And that is
Eric, can I make one, one comment about this? You may or may not realize this, but, uh, these are magistrates, so we go to those. If we have a juvenile or somebody that we had to give a magistrate's warning to, we, we can go to Sherry's house, Ms. Glover's house, we can get her to come meet us. Also, if we make an arrest on a, uh, on a warrant or anything like that, or they go to court, we have to have an attorney, we have to have a, a, a representative from our city go and read them their rights and everything at the jail. So they don't just come here on, once a Thursday night. Sometimes they get called out to do other things too. They get compensated for it. But we've got two people that work with us really well right now and I appreciate y'all supporting those guys.
All right. Moving on, item seven point seven, a second regular meeting, the fourth Monday of June is the twenty-fourth. Does anyone say need to meet again? Ms. Goodman? Mr. Harrison? Oh, sir. Counsel? All right. That measure has, lack of motion. Out of eight one oh in German, do I have a motion to adjourn? Have a motion for Mr. McCown, a second from Mr. Hoskins. All those in favor of adjournings, say aye? And we are adjourned as of six fifty-two T M. Thank you guys for coming out.